Welcome to the Monday, March 20th, 2023 Town and Ryan Bed Planning Board. We have a call on, so we're ready to go. I know no changes to the posted meeting agenda. You've all seen Jim's meeting notes. Have you had a chance to look at them? Jim, not working. I'll do it again. Has everybody had a chance to look at those notes?
Yeah.
Any comments, questions? Did I have a motion to accept them?
I won't.
Second, Craig, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, the motion carries. The March 6 minutes we received in draft form. Any comments or questions? Corrections?
It would mean.
And ran a motion?
I won't.
Thank you, Edna, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, thank you. Correspondence and announcements.
I think it's worth noting that it is the first day of spring. It's now 5:24, so it is over.
Well, there's an announcement worthy of recording.
Seems like it was just around the corner. Excuse me.
Oh, boy. It's gonna be a good night. I think that Planning Board members received a copy of the correspondence from Michael Zaren, which was his report on his study of HAPAC.
Yes, yes.
And this afternoon, I received a request from Mr. Zaren's office to schedule an opportunity to meet with the Planning Board to discuss that memo. He threw out a couple of opportunities, and I'm trying to figure out what's best for us. I asked about how long he thought that we would meet, and they thought about an hour. I've expressed a little bit of concern about trying to schedule an entirely separate meeting because we're meeting twice a month already. So I wanted to get your feedback on how you would like to proceed with that. Would you like to schedule an extra hour before a Planning Board meeting? Or what are your thoughts on how we can accomplish this?
Does this need to be a public meeting?
If, it's my understanding, and you can correct me, that if all members of the Planning Board are here, it becomes a public meeting.
If you're, yeah, if you have enough of corn, if you're going to be conducting business. Is this a training? Is it training or is it...?
It is a conversation in response to, for members of the public, the Historic Archaeological Preservation Advisory Committee has recently been working with another attorney to get some feedback from them, from the attorney, on how they can streamline their process and work more effectively. We've received a preliminary, received Mr. Zaren's recommendations and ideas, and he's going to proceed to meet with HAPAC and with the Planning Board to discuss the thoughts that he had as a result of his study. So I don't know that it's decision-making, but...
Well, I think it should be open meeting, yes.
Okay, so, yes.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, that's...
It just occurred to me that since part of the memo is talking about the fact that the Planning Board and HAPAC typically have not been meeting, et cetera, et cetera, that maybe this would be a good opportunity for us, the two boards, to be together to discuss this.
I asked that very question and was told that he wanted to meet separately with the two boards.
Well, la di, yeah.
I was trying to get ahead of that, and, you know, I asked the question because I said if it's a matter of scheduling to get the two groups together, that would make a difference. But the answer I got back was he was going to schedule separately with HAPAC.
Okay, well, either way is fine with me. I'm okay with doing a separate meeting or a meeting before maybe our next.
What is the purpose of actually meeting? Are we just re-reviewing what you sent us or...?
Well, his initial recommendations and thoughts were based on a conversation that he had with Michael and I. And I think he wants to ensure that the entire Planning Board has an opportunity to respond to what he's talking about, not just hearing it from... I know I talked to Jim, but he talked independently to Michael and I. So, you know, I think he's trying to make sure that he covers all the bases and gives everybody an opportunity to weigh in.
I'm confused. He talked to you independently to discuss what's in this memo or...?
No, he, his memo was based on the conversations he had with HAPAC and with Jim and Michael and I. You know, like, tell us how you work together, how does it come about? You know, you have questions, just to get a sense of it. And then he synthesized all of that to come up with his memo. Now he is looking to, I think, get a response to the things he's recommending in terms of what do you think reads well, what do you want to give me more information about. I was led to believe originally that in the end, there was going to be a workshop that included both groups, but that hasn't come up yet. I've asked about it, but I haven't gotten any answer.
Well, it seems to me that HAPAC and the Planning Board ought to be the drivers on what kind of meetings are held. You know, we're the people who have to deal with each other. Who's this person who's making these decisions?
The attorney detained by the town.
Okay.
I'm only, heck, I'm just here.
He's just a facilitator, right?
I can't comment on his conversations with the town or what he was asked to do. I'm only responding to what, the question he asked me today, which was, could he schedule a meeting with us? I'm certainly happy to share with him that if that's your wish, that you would, you know, you think it would be, might be more productive to have the groups meet together, but I'm not driving that bus.
Well, I'm assuming that eventually the groups will meet together.
Mm-hmm.
That would be good, okay.
I can certainly convey that that's a desirable outcome.
Does everybody agree that...
We can have some use of some of his recommendations that HAPAC might not agree with. And I think he maybe wants to know that we feel fully free to speak our minds and not feel that there can be something that might be put off by what he says.
Isn't it better just to get it in together and handle it all at once? It's boring talking.
It kind of sounds like, and I'm not, I'm not involved in this project, it sounds like this is kind of just more of an introductory meeting, kind of just testing the waters of each board before kind of having, you know, too many cooks in the kitchen kind of situation.
Instead of a half hour.
Yeah, that's, I agree. If we could handle it in about a half an hour before a regular meeting, I'd be willing to come in a little bit early. But it's just, we're getting into that season where nothing is going to be lightly scheduled, you know, for the foreseeable future.
So he has thrown out some dates to me that don't overlap with our Planning Board meetings, and I'm going to request that you work around a Planning Board meeting because I don't think any of us want to throw in an extra meeting in a month. So I'll give him, I'll talk to Gretchen about what the agendas are going to be for the meetings coming up, and we'll try to identify a tentative date. And I'll throw it out to all of you, and I'll suggest, I probably will suggest we convene at 5. We'll try to keep it to half an hour, but it'll give us time for a break if we run a little over before we start at 6.
I do have a suggestion. There's one comment in the document that says, somebody's guess, that 50 to 70% of HAPAC's recommendations were used or approved by the Planning Board. That's a number that is actually findable, right? I mean, we know how many applications went to them, we know what was done. I think that would be useful to have rather than that number, rather than just a guess. Because my guess is it's a lot higher than that.
Okay.
The only request I would have is if we could have an agenda prior to the vote, so we can compare it instead of ad hoc, I think that would help to us a lot, so.
Any other comments? I know, Craig, you responded, you've already read it and have thoughts about it, so appreciate that.
Well, and I hope that this will be in anticipation of having a more thorough workshop. You know, maybe have another date where we can better coordinate our efforts. But I think there's a lot that can be accomplished in a short amount of time if we do it all together.
Okay, anybody else?
I, you know, I've got it also, and, you know, there's certainly things that I would like to talk about without group hearings.
And I think to Kim's point, he may be looking to get the sense of a particular board as opposed to a back and forth. I think he's not looking at it as a problem-solving session or dialogue more of a... He wants to hear directly from each individual group, so, all right, I'll proceed with that. And so that brings us to this evening's first part of the agenda, which is new applications. And as it happens, both of the new applications before us are being represented by Mark Verminske, so Mark, T-Corp, Phase 2B, site plan renewal and miniature train.
Drawings to the train, just...
I mean, I can pull something up, but I think a quick just explanation over here is probably...
Good evening, Mark Verminske here, representing T-Corp LLC. So the purpose of this request to speak to the Planning Board is extension of two projects that were previously approved by this board for T-Corp LLC. And those two specific projects are just simply the, first is, if you recall, all the applications for T-Corp, KPH2 and Brindle Valley were presented, initially presented in the master plan. And so these two particular applications were actually Phase 2B. Phase 2B was the actual construction of the rail section of the train, which is right here. Right, so here's River Road, Hudson River. Recall the configuration for T-Corp. Property goes around like this, comes back like this, and slows down. Goes along the river, comes back through, up, up, through, through here, down here, back like this, around like that, kind of, it had been out of configuration. But, so Phase 2B covered this section, like I said, actual rail construction for Phases 1 and 2 of the, of the train. If you recall, the master plan also had Phases 3 and 4 for construction of the rail right there. And then, so that was, that's Phase 2B. And then also in front of this board for a request for an extension of approval for site plan, both had site plan and special permit, was the, was the actual buildings that were associated with T-Corp. And if you recall, for T-Corp LLC, it was a twofold application. One was site plan special permit, consideration for ultimate approval by this board. And then also, because of the number of structures that were located on the process, so bulk of the T-Corp, here's the main residence. This is an accessory structure. You go through, right here is an accessory structure. There were multiple accessory structures that were included in the, in the application along with the structures that were being proposed to be constructed with the train. There were three structures that were going to be constructed with the train. There was the actual train building itself and the roundhouse. There was a train building, and then, and then the station house were the three structures that were associated with the application. So it was twofold. It was with this board and it was also with the ZBA. The ZBA, and the reason for the application to the ZBA is the number of accessory structure, well, it's actually the total floor area of the accessory structures on the property and the fact that at T-Corp, all the accessory structures are located in the front yard of the principal residence, since the main residence is right here. And so we actually started some construction on the train portion, Phase 2B, with some initial clearing and just, you know, initial clearing for construction of the rail. And it was done, if you recall, it was a time limitation when you could do clearing had to be by the end of, end of this month, and then you can start up again in November. So your clearing timing from November until the end of this month. So we started that last year, and so there's been clearing of the trees that were necessary for construction of the rail and then also in this area right here where the buildings reside for the train. So, and so what also needs to occur is application for building permit for those structures. And so here, it's a request for consideration to this board for extension of both of those. I have, actually have the original approval plans that were signed. I don't want to take too much of your time, but like, for example, Phase 3, which was the building, was signed on 18th of April. Actually, it was signed 21st of July, on 2022. So it's not that, it hasn't lasted that long. And then, and, oh, it's my understanding, special permit is for six months, site plan is for a year. Is that correct, Jim?
It's the other way around. The other way around?
Special use permit, see here, site plan six months.
Site plan six months, okay. And then the same thing for Phase 2B, which was earlier, which was the 2nd of May, was the hearing, and it was actually signed on May 6. So there, it's relatively new, but, so during the late fall and the early spring of this year, bids were obtained for construction of both the rail and also the structures associated with it. We had a successful bidder and looking to move forward later this spring. It's, you know, a process of going through drawings now, ordering materials, and just awaiting to start construction as soon as the, well, I know it's, did you say that it went...
Spring, it's already here.
It's spring now, not quite.
Yeah, 5:24, and here it is, quarter after six.
We're almost an hour into it.
Yeah, well, sometimes the ground doesn't react to that so well. So we're gonna, we're gonna wait till a little bit nicer weather comes before we start construction. So that's, that's it, that's our third request in front of the board this evening.
Yeah, so all I was gonna say is, you know, typically, you know, Mark would be back just for a request for an extension. Unfortunately, we missed that deadline, so we're back for essentially reapproval, I guess you'd say. So it really isn't any different than if we had an extension request, other than we have to go through a different process more formally. So what I provided tonight was just, depending on how the board wants to move forward, there are two of them. There's Phase 2B and Phase 3. If the board decides that you would like to take this to a public hearing process, we would do a procedural resolution and then schedule a public hearing for 30 days from now, or we just do an approval tonight and then do another approval resolution there. Typically, when we get a request for an extension, we do it that evening. You know, depending on the board. But obviously, the decision's up to the board on how you want to proceed.
Mark, are there any changes proposed in either of these two? Are those strictly renewals of existing approvals? There's nothing new, nothing different?
No, there's nothing new.
Okay. I would think just to improve the two approach.
I would agree. There's never been very much public interest, you know, or concerns expressed at public hearings.
Craig?
I have no objection. It seems like it's, you know, nothing's changed. It's the same approval that met, that he met in July, so it's just changing the date on when it expires.
That's, that's the case. I just recently, the previously approved plans for consideration.
For all intents and purposes, the paperwork issue.
Okay, I'm, should I make a motion?
Do you want to go through them one by one?
I think we should go with individual votes.
Okay, so, Jim, you want to go through T-Corp, Phase 2B?
Yep.
So, again, the approval resolutions are exactly the same as they were for the prior, except for the introductory paragraph, which states these are reapproval or renewal. Otherwise, they are the same. This one would be for T-Corp, Phase 2B, a draft approval resolution for your consideration, asking you to act as follows on the application by T-Corp for site plan reapproval or renewal under Conco Chapter 125 for implementation of Phase 2B at T-Corp, 195 River Road, within the HP20 zoning district. Reaffirming the action is type 2 under seeker, based upon submitted information reports and others things to do previously, that you find the proposals consistent with the objectives and regulations of Chapter 125, and approve the application for site plan approval. Finding the proposed work in the intended use is consistent with Conco Chapter 125. And you authorize the Planning Board Chair to stamp and sign the above cited site plan upon the satisfaction of the below three conditions.
I may have a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Edna. Does I have to poll the board? Michael?
Aye.
Four?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Edna, go down.
Thank you.
And then regarding T-Corp LLC, Phase 3?
Again, a draft approval resolution for the board's consideration, asking you to act on the application by T-Corp for site plan reapproval or renewal under Conco Chapter 125 for construction of the car bar and roundhouse, station and garage addition to the existing guest cottage on 195 River Road. Reaffirming the action is type 2 under seeker, based upon submitted information, finding that the proposed work is consistent with the objectives or regulations of Chapter 125. With respect to the application for site plan approval, finding that work in the intended use is consistent with Chapter 125, Section 125.75, and authorizing the Planning Board Chair to stamp and sign the site plan on the evidence satisfaction of the three conditions.
I have a motion, please.
So moved.
Sean, second? Edna? Paul, board, Craig?
Aye.
Edna, aye. Michael?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
I go down.
Thank you.
Let me just share a little bit of information, if you don't mind, with the planning board members and the public. You may recall when the town was approved, we spoke with our building inspector, who expressed some concerns about his ability to review such a complicated construction project, feeling that he didn't have expertise in trained construction. And so with the consent of the applicant, we reached out to our planning consultant, CPL, and asked if they had within their company, because they are, you know, appointed as planning consultants, the ability to assign someone from their staff to be the building inspector on this project. And they, they agreed at the time to do that. So we've initiated a conversation, now trying to initiate a meeting with Mark and representative from CPL, who will be the building inspector, so that that person who is at this point, I assume, unfamiliar with the project, totally unfamiliar with the project, because Mark is anticipating, as he said, a later spring commencement of the construction itself. And so we're trying to coordinate that meeting so that this engineer comes in fully knowledgeable about what he's getting himself into. And between Mark and whoever this engineer will be, they can work out a timetable for the inspection as the construction goes on. So I just wanted to let you all know that that's been part of the ongoing discussion about the implementation going forward of this project. And I thank you for your cooperation on setting that up.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the first public hearing of the evening. That is Ryan Cliff Hotel, Corky, 4 Grunell Street. And at the request of the applicant, we are, the applicant has requested a continuation to our May 15 meeting. Anything else you want to add, Victoria?
Not at this time.
Okay. So may I have, let me, let me start with asking if there's anyone here from the public who wishes to comment on Corky because it is a public hearing.
What's the reason for the...
I think they're still working out some details of the application.
Yes, when we were here before the board for the public hearing, there was a lot of public comment on aspects of the application. And so the applicant had been discussing alternatives and project details before returning to the board.
Again, anyone from the public? If not, may I have a motion to continue the public hearing to May 15?
So moved.
Michael, thank you.
Second.
Second, Craig, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension. Next is, next up for public hearings would have been Catherine Whitman, 16 Old Post Road. She too is requesting continuation this time to April 17. And I can, she's not here, but I can say it's because she still has not received all her information from the Department of Health. Is that correct? So she's still waiting to hear back from DOH. So may I have a motion to continue?
So moved.
Thank you, Edna, second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, extension, the motion carries. The third public hearing for this evening is Wesley Kozennick, 45 Kelly Street. Site plan and special use permit for the construction of the deck stairs and patio and the repair of the front porch. Good evening.
Good evening.
For this evening. Would you like to refresh on the may? I want you to like to be.
Sure, absolutely. So again, just to refresh, we are, where is it? Front of that, here. So we are just planning to do some refurbishment of the front porch, leaving it as it exists, just swapping out everything that's rotten and replacing the case plate. And then, right here, we'll be building a small bluestone patio, which is indicated now on the site plans that have been submitted. It's just not on this, so you have that. That would simply just extend from just the inside of this corner to where the stairs for the porch, the deck would be. So just this little strip right there. Then, right here, is a proposed deck, about 10 to 20 feet. The stairs would come down here where there's some existing brick doors. And we'll also be hoping to re-sign the house as well, since we have aluminum siding that's very beat up, sadly.
Okay, Jim, any comments?
Only a comment I have is that I believe HAPAC had some concerns about the vinyl siding on the house, proposal vinyl siding on the house. I have no other planning comments.
Okay, I'm going to ask for comments from the folks who made the site visit, and then I believe the CAB is here to also offer their report. So I'll start with Planning Board members.
The lead went out, we took a look and we found absolutely no issues with the construction issues, the porch, the patio, or the deck. The aluminum siding on the house looks really, there's no question about that. And we discussed the vinyl siding. He was suggesting that that's what he'd like to do, replacing the aluminum siding with vinyl. Ordinarily, ideally, you prefer not having aluminum vinyl siding in your houses. He'd asked him to provide some pictures we made, because the neighborhood houses all appear to have white vinyl siding on them, and they're all kind of working together to try and maintain the sort of cohesive appearance of this little corner of the line. I guess my feeling about this is, under this circumstance, the vinyl siding would be an improvement would be aluminum, and it's not something that couldn't be, it's not making a structural change to the house. It's not making any changes that could very easily be removed and taken off and go back to wood or whatever, something like that. Under this particular circumstance, I think it's a significant improvement because the aluminum siding really looks horrible, so.
Did you consider aluminum siding?
Yes, we have. We think that the, given the state of, the information I received from contractors about aluminum siding, as well as other types of siding, it just seems most cost-effective and ease of maintenance to go with vinyl for us at this time. Additionally, as, oh, God, I need glasses now. Mr. Trimble, as he pointed out, we're really concerned that we want to keep our project in keeping what's going on with our neighbors in the neighborhood. We really like the aesthetic of having the little hillside of white houses, and we think this would be the easiest way to accomplish that for us.
Sean?
I don't have much further to add from Michael than that he is, you know, the property is going to be a substantial cleanup from what it is now. And that's really all I have to add to this one.
Jim, you mentioned that you believe that HAPAC has concerns. Have they, what are their concerns? Do we have a written...
Yeah, we did get something in writing, didn't we, Gretchen? I'm fairly certain they did, and I'm fairly certain that they did not encourage the use of vinyl siding. I don't know that they, well, let's see if we can find it. I don't want to paraphrase for them. While we're waiting for that, maybe Sharon would offer up the CAB report? Or we can circle back.
Should I have been notified? I have the company.
You would have. I'm CAB, actually, I'm CAB.
Look, Sharon, welcome in. Could you please add in on yourself?
Sharon Schwab from the CAB. We did the site, I did the site visit with Sean and Michael, and I agree with what I said. It's, it would be a nice improvement. I also agree with the vinyl siding, replace the dented aluminum siding that needs replacing. So we have no issue with this project.
Thank you. I review, anyone?
Does anyone know if this is one of the enumerated historic buildings in the district? Or is it just a building that's within the historic district? or is it just a building that's within the historic district?
It is listed.
Okay, it is listed. And I think the, the logic behind the discouragement of vinyl siding is, it is a lower maintenance option to painted wood, because of the wood you have to keep repainting there, roppet and studio repairs, repaired in a TV, you know, an ongoing thing where vinyl is much simpler. It does also have the tendency to hide problems that might be a negative need for maintenance, like if there's a leak in a gutter and water is penetrating, getting into the building, you might not see it because the vinyl siding is going to be in good shape, whereas, you know, wood would kind of lose its paint and telegraph that you've got a leak and a problem that needs to be addressed. But the, the issue with vinyl siding, I think, has a lot more to do with vinyl replacing wood or covering wood, as opposed to something that's already covering wood, which could be the aluminum. And you're really, in a way, you're replacing it in time, but not with the exact kind. It's a, it's a similar manufactured extruded shaped product that's supposed to look like flabbered. And it seems like it's a, not really a net loss. But I think that the provisions within the historic district, the design guidelines, do recommend something along the lines of Hardy plank, the fiberboard siding.
So if I, can I speak to the, we looked into Hardyboard, and we have found that in our neighborhood, and unfortunately, there aren't houses directly around us, the houses directly on either side, and we have white vinyl siding, and some of it's fairly new. But there are two buildings that just got Hardyboard installed within the last two years in town, and they're already starting to spall, which is a problem that Hardyboard has when it's exposed to really, really cold temperatures. And in Rhine Cliff, we get a lot of that with the wind coming off the river. So that wasn't an option that we wanted to pursue.
When you say spall?
Like it's, it gets, it kind of, the seams come apart, and then, and then it gets like a, like a white kind of film, where I think it's probably whatever they're making Hardyboard out of has some sort of, it's emitting something.
Yeah, it's important to cement. Yeah, it's important to cement. It should be.
So we're hoping to avoid that. Maybe spalling is the wrong word, maybe.
Spalling is something that happens to concrete when it actually explodes, and big chunks of it come off.
Misused words. Yeah, so I've noticed the Hardyboard in town has this kind of staining thing because of how cold and windy it is in Rhine Cliff.
So HAPAC did briefly discuss this at their last meeting. I was in on email that said that they were concerned, although I don't think we got it officially, that they were concerned about the installation of vinyl siding taking off the aluminum, unless, of course, they found that the existing wood underneath was in such bad shape that, you know, that was the realistic option. But that was, I mean, it was forwarded officially, but I was talking about that. So I guess the warning means decide what they want to do if, and we didn't get an official recommendation. But I guess since we know what the thinking was, ordinarily, decide what you want to do, we should probably state that officially.
Okay. Let me, let me ask the public, if there's anyone here to comment on this application, and then I'll come back to the planning board for discussion. Is there anyone here from the public? All right, not so well. I'll open it up for discussion among planning board members. Craig?
Well, I think the, the salient point here is whether or not the vinyl siding is going to obscure or eliminate a character defining feature of the building, which it seems like it would not, because it's, it really is following the same patterns of corner boards.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. That's actually the whole purpose of why we're pursuing this type of side. We want to have it staying in keeping with its current look, just, you know, not beat up.
Right. And the only caution would be, we don't want to set a dangerous precedent that we're allowing everybody to just put vinyl siding wherever they want. I think there's a suitable rationale behind the application of this in this case.
And if I understood my knowledge to the right of me, although we would not want to set precedent with vinyl siding as opposed to a natural wood siding or an alternative, you see this as an improvement and a?
It's an improvement, and I think that, to make a very good point, that particularly with wood, right now, I think that we would say we would not want vinyl siding through or wooden siding, exposed wooden siding, which takes the lack in wooden paint, but it's not, it's aluminum siding, which basically really looks terrible. And with vinyl siding, it'd be a significant visual aesthetic improvement, and it's not the sort of thing that alters the house structure, you know, or anything like that, and opens anything along those lines, and it can always be undone. So just putting a lot of that together just seems to make the most sense in this particular instance. And I think they're recommending it, we want wood, take this point to be wood, but in a situation like this, I think this is definitely an improvement over what currently exists.
I think this is a good example of how it would be really helpful to have a better communication with HAPAC, because it's unclear to me what concern means, you know, to have a concern. I'd be very interested in knowing what the response would be to the fact that there are four hoses nearby, all of which have vinyl siding, some of them are recently installed, and the applicant's comments about what happens sometimes to Hardyboard. So we're kind of left with, I guess, you know, we have to ignore them, or?
Well, I don't, I think, I think the point that you made earlier, one of the things that will come up, is that they are there as an advisory committee, and we are there to receive their thoughts and recommendations. We are not obligated to take it as possible. What we are obligated, as we did this evening, to explain the rationale for why we are not accepting it in its entirety. And I think we've all expressed that quite clearly and made a case for why in this situation we deviate, which is our preferred, you know, from our preferred alternative. So I think I'm satisfied that we have thoroughly discussed it to the point that we should be ready to take a vote if you're all ready. And if we are, then we ask Jim to proceed with the draft procedural resolution.
Can I add one thing? And that's, there are a number of different ways that vinyl siding can be detailed, where the siding meets the trim around the windows and the corner boards. So I would encourage you to be particularly fussy in the selection of those details and the JVs and the channels that are all part of the system, because that's one of those things that really can change the appearance of the building and make it look a little less, a little less grand. But it seems like you have the proper aims in mind, so.
I can, I can address that specifically. So my mother, Leslie, who's the owner of the home, is a, she runs the Rowan Historical Society in Connecticut, and we have looked.
Will she be mad at you if you don't do it right?
Oh, no. It's that she's a curator. She's meticulous, and that's the whole idea behind refurbishing this house. We love it, we love Rhine Cliff, we want to restore it in a way that is in keeping with its historical properties. We even went to the historical society and got photos of it from in nineteen seventy-six, when we did the last survey, to make sure that our plans are in keeping with what it was historically previously.
Thanks for taking so much care.
Thanks.
Are we ready? Yeah, I mean, a motion to close the public hearing. Second. You moved, and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension. Okay, now Jim can go to the draft procedural.
Draft approval resolution for the board's consideration tonight, acting on the application by Leslie Kozynek for site plan and special use permit under the time of court chapter one two five, to reconstruct and rebuild the front porch from the lattice, install vinyl siding and new deck, and some blue stone patio at forty-five Kelly Street and the RCH zoning district in the area to overlay. Reaffirming the action is type two under seeker, for which coordinated environmental quality review is percolated, based upon submitted information we have used undertaken, including reports from planning board members, HAPAC, and CAB WAC, asking you to find that proposed work is consistent with the objectives and regulations of chapter one two five. With respect to the application for special use permits to reconstruct, rebuild the front porch from the lattice, install the vinyl siding, new deck, and blue stone patio, finding that proposed work in intended use to be consistent with the general standards for special use permits, and granting the requested special use permit, are conditioned upon site plan approval. With respect to the application for site plan approval, again, asking you to find that proposed work in intended use is consistent with the time of court chapter one two five, approving the application inclusive of the materials of the site planned by Oakhold Land Survey, dated January thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and authorizing the planning board chair to stamp and sign the above cited site plan upon the evidence satisfaction of the three conditions for it.
I have a motion.
So moved.
Michael? Second. Sean, Paul Ford, Craig?
Aye.
Edna, aye. Sean?
Aye.
Michael, aye. And I vote aye. Good luck with your project.
Thanks so much, man. It was very tough. So can I just ask, what, like, what are the next steps?
We talked to Gretchen.
I have a call. Melody's time.
All right, and the last public hearing for this evening is Alderkill, Altonburg, fifteen Bollbeck Road, special plan and nature subdivision.
Hi, everyone. I'm Altonburg for Alderkill Conservation Subdivision. I am back again proposing for new building lots on a property currently located fifteen Bollbeck Road. Really, the only thing that's changed in the, almost two years now that we have been here, is that the sort of open space that we're proposing have grown from nineteen acres to forty-five acres. Building lots have pretty much remained the same, certainly in the building sites. Area disturbance is actually, we might break it down. So I believe I've submitted everything that the planning board has asked me for today. We've done all the studies the planning board has asked for, and consulted all the experts that planning board wanted, including attorneys and CPL. So I'm looking forward to moving this along after tonight, and I'm here to answer any questions you have. Also have Jordan Valdina and Alan Rabelia. Thank you.
Jim?
I'm going to take a few minutes with this one. So I wanted to start by saying, we did get a letter today from CPL. I don't know if you guys had a chance to review it, but I did take a quick look at it, and the email from Christian let me know that, I think, generally speaking, a major in perspective, he's okay with everything that's been submitted, except he does want to see a SWIP submitted, but he thought that could be a condition of final approval because the SWIP for a subdivision is not as big a deal as it would be if you're doing development itself.
Can I address that now, why there isn't a full SWIP?
Okay.
It's under the condition that the animal, oh, I apologize. Hi, Jordan Duncan. For disturbance under five acres, and I can, I'm not remembering the chapter first that I was quoting, but is as presented to the DEC as well, and under twenty-five residential lots, I believe, you don't need a full SWIP as such, meaning all the hydrologic calculations and the formality of the SWIP. I do need to control erosion and sediment, but anyway, I'll be following up with that, just presenting the basis of that. I don't know if locally he can say, yeah, but I want one anyway.
No, you wanted a SWIP for erosion control plan essentially submitted, what you'd have with the subdivision. He said it wouldn't be a full SWIP, like you'd have the development. You'd have to talk to him about the details?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's all beyond where I can talk. But that, that was a request, he said that that could be a condition of approval if the planning board was okay with it, because there's a standard between the two of you, and that's something we would review in detail per se. So if the board was okay with that, that would just be a condition.
Okay, okay. Just to mention that I believe I've done so, you know, it looks unassuming in these plans, and I had to call the DEC's attention to it as well, and we can have more about it as the details as that unfolds.
Something, something we've worked on as a condition.
Yeah, understood. Thank you.
Yep. So as the board knows, we're going to go through the four steps of the conservation subdivision, which we'll get to eventually. But the big outstanding item, as far as I'm concerned from the planning perspective, that we still have to kind of, I guess, reach resolution on, is related to the driveway issue that's been discussed with you and your neighbor. So I guess, I'd like to start by asking if there's been a resolution to the driveway issue since we met the last time.
No, it's a way of keeping public hearings open as long as possible. I believe, as I understand it, near as I can tell, my neighbor would prefer that I not have to expand the driveway, and is also not willing to grant me a crosseasement so that I might avoid expanding driveway. He first asked, sent us a list a year and change ago, fourteen conditions I presented to the planning board, a mandate to shrinking of the aforementioned conservation area, moving of building sites into wetland buffers, and all sorts of things that wouldn't be possible, I refuse. Their latest offer was that I pay them in cash for use of crosseasement, neither of those is appealing to me. And I don't believe the trespass issue is mine to address. It's not my property, I can't put anything on their property to protect them from imaginary potential future trespass issues. All I can say is that we have no intention of trespassing on their property, and will have no need to.
So I can assume that would probably be the answer again. So I did prepare a couple paragraphs, and I think I'm just going to read them verbatim, because I can do it better through this. I did coordinate with Grant Lyons on this and putting it together, so they have had some input on it as well. But because we haven't come to any, oh, no, I'm just going to read it, it'll be easier to read sometimes again. So, in my memo.
Hold it, get it on the screen so those who want to read it will.
I'm going to make a few paragraphs.
Well, I don't have to read the screen, but I want to make sure it's, it's.
Well, as I said, I'm, unfortunately, I'm going to read it verbatim, but I think that's the best way to go through it at this point. So, an outstanding item for discussion regarding the Alderkill applicant's conservation subdivision project is how the driveway can be installed and utilized without causing vehicles to use the portion of the driveway that is owned by the adjacent property owner, Benetti. The Alderkill driveway as proposed will be a full width driveway that will be located entirely on the applicant's property. Although, although this will cause the driveway to cross the wetlands, the applicant has secured NYSD DC approval to approach on the wetlands. Where the Alderkill driveway gains ingress egress to Buttonwood Lane, there is a portion of the Benetti property that includes the existing driveway entrance used by both Alderkill and Benetti currently. The problem this creates is that without permission or consent from the Benettis, vehicles utilizing the Alderkill portion of the proposed driveway for the conservation subdivision must remain entirely on the Alderkill driveway, cannot utilize that portion of the driveway that is currently on the Benetti property, so there's nothing preventing this from occurring. The planning board cannot require the Benettis to change their driveway, and cannot require the applicant to conduct any work on the Benetti property without the permission and consent from the Benettis. However, one way in which this issue could be resolved would be if Alderkill and Benetti mutually agree to resolutions to how the edge of the driveways are accessible. As we just heard, I believe that's not the case at this time, we can't have that agreement. So, for example, Benettis can give consent, most likely by way of appeasement, to Alderkill to use the portion of the driveway that is located on their property. The agreement would need to be worked out between Alderkill and the Benettis, would have to be finalized before any final determination from the planning board on the subdivision. The agreement would become part of the record. Another possible solution would be if the Benettis abandoned a portion of the driveway, ingress egress, thereby then only utilizing the Alderkill driveway for access. As noted in the Grant Lyons memo dated February seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, the Benettis already have a right of way over the portion of the Alderkill driveway, parcel A, by their deed. So if the Benettis were to abandon the portion of the driveway that crosses onto their property, there would only be one driveway to utilize, and it would all be on the Alderkill property. This driveway section could be returned to a natural state with grass, planted trees, et cetera. Doing so would remove the driveway segment from use and force all vehicles to use the driveway that is fully on the property owned by Alderkill. If the Benettis and Alderkill cannot mutually agree to a solution, the planning board would have to consider ways in which vehicles for the Alderkill subdivision would not cross onto the Benetti property. One suggestion is to require the installation of a physical barrier between the Alderkill driveway and a portion of the adjacent Benetti property driveway section. This barrier must be fully on the applicant's property. Depending on the width of the driveway, we'd prefer to see natural materials such as boulders, shrubs, and planting use to better blend in with the natural landscape. However, given the driveway width required and limitation on widening to the north side of the driveway due to the presence of the wetland, there may not be enough room to install a natural barrier. In this case, a fence could be required by the planning board. The fence cannot exceed four feet in height, within fifty feet of the front lot line, but can be increased to six feet in height further into the property. However, in considering fences and barriers, it's also important to make sure that the Benettis' access over the Alderkill driveway parcel eight is not disrupted. Again, it's important to reiterate that the planning board cannot impose a condition on the adjacent property owner, nor make any changes to the adjacent property because it is not part of the current application. However, if the Benettis and Alderkill mutually agree to a solution, that can be considered by the planning board, or the planning board can place conditions and design criteria that would be solely on the Alderkill driveway and on the applicant to install. So, I guess, but it kind of boils down to, as far as I'm concerned from the planning perspective, is that there is a feeling we have to make sure that this crossover does not occur. The only way to do so would be for you to, I believe, to put a fence along the red line on your property line. I don't believe that the natural features such as boulders and things which I prefer to see would actually fit within the driveway width that you have there without crossing over onto your neighbor's property. I'll be honest, I'm not thrilled about the idea of fence, but given that we have to do what we have to do, the fence would have to be built. we have to do, the fence would have to be located 40 feet back from the Buttonwood Lane, run some distance along the red line, and then, I would believe, would have to stop where this blue line starts to come back into the existing driveway area. This is all something that has to be put on the plan, Jordan, someone would have to engineer to make sure that it makes sense, and that your driveway width is maintained in proper width, and that the Benetti side is as well. I believe that at this point in time, I believe that the only possible outcome we're looking for, but again, it's a recommendation of mine, it's something I bring up to the planning board and sub their discussion.
I just, I understand all three of the solutions proposed by John Lyons' office, the first two of which, of course, I cannot affect because they involve what would be much easier solutions, but they involve Benetti's property, which, of course, I can't, it's a citation I'm on there, instead of a driveway. However, if I'm assuring the planning board that there will be no trespass, then I just don't see why it should fall on me to install a fence here. If anyone involved in construction or involved in living on the property after construction were to trespass, I assume there is recourse in place for the general right, like for someone to keep a neighbor from trespassing. Why I should be paying for a fence, I'm not sure. I was going to suggest if pressed on it, and the Benettis really are concerned about it, that they could do what I did prior to, you Melody, I think, and Jim coming out for our last site, is it was to have John Becker spray paint the road, and exactly within a tenth of an inch of where the property line is, and if the Benettis would like to put construction fencing up to make sure that we can't go over it or make it clear if anyone were to trespass, of course, that would be fine.
I have a... I just want to make sure that Carl has completed his thoughts and comments.
Yep.
All right, then, I'll go with the planning board members and comments.
Okay. How can the planning board make sure that someone won't go on the Alderkill driveway and then turn into the Benetti property?
They might, it might be with any driveway if someone turns into the wrong driveway.
And if there were a fence, how could you make sure that someone wouldn't drive up the Benetti portion and then go onto the Alderkill portion, because they don't know any better than they're visiting?
Well, it all becomes the Alderkill portion at a point where it does cross the red line. The issue here is delineating the difference between the two to the extent that I think the planning board has requested that's, I believe, this is enough.
Is this not just a matter of some feet, 45 feet, or is it more than that?
Oh, no, it's probably 160, 800 feet. I don't know, Jordan, better guess, that's my guess, somewhere between 160 and 200 feet would be my guess, hopefully.
And it is possible to access what was called in the last meeting, parcel A, entirely without encroaching. It's possible to access without encroaching.
That is what we're proposing.
So, it doesn't have to be necessary, it just has to be possible. You don't have to make it easy, you just have to provide a means...
Yes.
Of conveniently accessing that property without trespass. I go into people's driveways to turn around sometimes, and that's, I think, a very common use for driveways. And I think it's unfortunate that there's this necessary encroachment on wetlands in order to satisfy what eventually becomes a shared driveway that is entirely located on parcel A.
That's correct. I also consider it a shame, I have tried, I believe, in good faith, to avoid all of this, but I'm running into requests, and then no follow-up, and then phone calls for months, and then, you know, and all I can assume is that it was all in service of getting us to an hour 11 of the hearing without, as far as I know, an original concern raised by anybody since the first one, so I can't see what other...
I have another question.
Sure.
If the Benettis were willing to do this, would you pay for whatever is required to put the proper curb in, put topsoil on the, what was their driveway and plant brass on it?
Would I pay for it, sure. I obviously couldn't, I don't think we could have a resolution where I was responsible for actually doing it, because it's not my property, but yes. Sure.
Okay, so here's my question. Could the planning board say that that offer must be made to the Benettis? In other words, you now have the ability to get rid of this driveway, get a curb put in, topsoil put in, brass put in, with, I don't know, somehow there would have to be an amount of money discussed. And if you're not willing to do that, then you need to take your chances on somebody going onto your portion of the driveway to turn up. And the reason I'm proposing this is I think that something like a fence is against the neighborhoods and the community's interest. I think it's a detriment to the community, I think it would look ridiculous, I think it's unnecessary, and the Benettis have everything to gain from increasing their yard and using easement that they have to drive out of their driveway. So, I think, you know, I need a legal opinion, but I think that it's a good solution, it solves their problem about their concern, people, you know, trespassing on their land.
Let me defer to, uh...
Yeah. Can anybody here, do you want to go?
I do.
So, the problem with requiring, the planning board requiring that action to be taken or to be explored is that it requires a lot, you know, work to be done on the neighboring property that's not part of this application. You know, the planning board can certainly recommend it, not as a condition, but, you know, supporting it, but again, you know, it's really up to, as Joe said in his memo, the Benettis and Carl to really come together and work that out. The planning board can't force that to happen, they can certainly suggest it.
But see, I'm not suggesting that the planning board force it to happen. I'm suggesting that a condition of approval be that Alderkill paid, offered to pay for it to happen. The Benettis may accept that or turn it down. If they accept it, the problem goes away, no one is going to trespass on that property. If they turn it down, then they take their chances on whether or not someone may trespass on their part of the driveway to get up the rest of the driveway.
Yeah, I guess I would say it can't be a condition or a requirement to even go with that route. Again, it could be a suggestion, but because the work would be done on the Benetti property, that's where it can't simply be a condition to just approve it.
Everything needs to be on the applicant's property for this...
For, in terms of having it as part of the approval, I mean, that's, I believe that solution would probably be the most reasonable. Reasonable, perhaps, and just the one that kind of resolves a lot of the issue. You know, as I mentioned in my memo to you, the actual restrictions regarding access does say that the Benettis should not have a driveway on their property, but, you know, so that would also revolve that issue, but again, because the requirement would require the work to be done solely on the Benetti property, it can only go so far in terms of requirements.
Other planning boards?
Would the Benettis be utilizing the driveway to the right of the red line? And there'd be fence down the middle, is that my understanding?
They could, but the driveway agreement allows them to use the entire driveway, so even the area expanded out in blue, they'd be allowed to use based on the driveway agreement from what I've read previously, so they'd have access to the whole.
I guess, for my concerns about a fence construction being in the middle, I'm just thinking, snow, I, like, it just, it's just a compounding factor.
I don't disagree with you, there are fences where the law property lines and the driveways, I'm not saying it's my number one.
Yeah, I just, I think it's...
It's kind of where I land with, not just to address the issue in front of us.
Especially with me being a doctor, I mean, it's just one more thing.
One at a time, please. That's all right, I will wait until you finish. I felt bad.
Exactly right, I apologize.
Yeah. I'll pass the, pass the mic.
I'm just wondering why it's a planning board issue to try to keep someone from trespassing by mistake on a portion of the driveway? Why is that a planning board issue?
I believe it is, if you want to address it more legally.
Well, it's more that, just the way that the driveway is designed, you know, it is an open issue, and the plan, you know, the concern is anyways with the planning board, if they can try to provide a design to help prevent it, they should.
But is the applicant under an obligation to prevent trespass on the neighbor's property as long as they've provided an adequate means for accessing the neighboring property?
I can look further into that, I don't know the answer to that.
And how about a very small sign that's, you know, says, clearly says, "Stay left," or whatever is required for those addresses?
I can look into it, but like, you know, the memo that Jim had to look at was just about the fence, and that, at the moment, seemed like that was really the only solution.
My take, based on the conversations, was that we need to see some type of physical separation, based on what we've heard in public hearings. I don't like it, don't get me wrong, but I do feel like that's the only, within the realm of what the planning board could do to address this issue. I feel like it's the only thing that would fit within the driveway width that would potentially address the issue. I'm not saying I like it at all, I'm just saying that's why, I can't come up with another solution that would...
I think sharing the whole driveway, just like the remainder of the driveway is shared, would be a very tidy solution.
I agree with the planning board.
Put a lot of this to rest.
But as Kim said, the planning board cannot require the Benettis to do anything on their property, it's not part of this application. We can only address what's on the property of the applicant, and that's just...
If you worry a quote "fence," it doesn't even have to be very high, you know?
It could be about 14.
No, I mean, it could be a foot and a half, actually, right? It's just something that funnels you in a certain direction.
If we had to go over the fence, that would be up to the discussion by the board.
I'm gonna make a trench.
Let me, let me...
I put a trench there with rocks in it.
Let me continue to ask my client. I see Jordan getting Nancy in his seat, I see others who want to talk, so I'm gonna try and take this one person at a time. Michael?
I have two thoughts. First of all, that is idea, if you go to Burger Hill, there's that guide fence along, you know, you pull into the split rail fence, you park up behind it, there's a guide rail fence about, what, a foot and a half off the ground? You know, and that's gonna keep you from going anywhere, I mean, it's thick. The other thing is, what's the requirement for posting no trespassing signs? Is every 140 or 150 feet, something like that? If you deliberately post that no trespassing is permitted, because the understanding is unless you post no trespassing, no one is in obligation to, or assume no trespassing, you could be prosecuted for that. So, possibly, just a proper posting of no trespassing signs just on very, right along the property line, every 150 feet they have to be to be legal, would then make it illegal to trespass, and then there could be legal action taken, some, you know, drive off there. On the Roger Island, you would always drive over that property because they're out of control and crashing, so you get a lot of that, and it happens. And, you know, delivered after the last almost 50 years. But it seems to me, if trespassing is a concern here, it has to be properly posted, no trespassing, or there is no legal recourse. And also, if it's a small, short fence, as it was suggested, that would not probably be a problem in snow removal, you know, if you push the stuff over, but it would clearly do any, where the edge of the property driveway is, and it would prevent any vehicles from going through that unless they were going in excess of their speed, in which case there would probably be trespassing.
I have a question. Come back here, but I also see some hands here. Who wants to vote first? I'll be all there. Who's you want to vote?
Victoria?
Okay. Victoria Polidoro, 112 Polidoro, on behalf of the Benettis. I want to start by just addressing the mischaracterization that the Benettis are opposed to some kind of compromise. They've been open and willing to work in a solution at the last, right before the last meeting, we got a letter that said, you know, "We're done talking about this." And so, I just want to say that there's still an opportunity to work this out, and they've been open to this all along, there's just some hesitancy to pay, you know, about the cost sharing and other liabilities that need to be worked out. It's not enough just to have a means not to trespass. The problem here is not that there's, I mean, there's always the ability for someone to walk onto someone else's property. The problem here is that you're approving a plan that facilitates a trespass just about in every case, and you can't do that, that's outside your jurisdiction, because there's just about no way for anyone, it's like a municipal boundary line, without some kind of barrier, someone pulling into the driveway doesn't see any kind of property on their ground, they're automatically going to go to the right, which is the Benetti property. And so, the plan that you have just doesn't work unless there's some kind of agreement between the parties. I guess the other problem that we're really seeing tonight is what Mr. Duncanberg said at the beginning, there's really been no changes to the plan in two years. We've been here raising issues, asking for modifications, asking even for trees between the property to be planted as part of the landscaping plan, and nothing has been done to address any of those concerns. So, I have a letter, I'm gonna hand it out to everyone. Do you mind packing them down? I think you guys saw this already. So, I'll just quickly go through, but the onus is on the applicant to come up with a plan that meets the zoning law and minimizes impacts to neighbors and keeps stormwater on the property. And at this point, we just don't have a plan that meets those requirements. We feel that there may be... Yeah. I also emailed it to Gretchen and Jim.
Rather difficult to get this, I've seen, it would have been nice to get this earlier.
I agree. Life of a lawyer, it's hard to do anything that's not less limited. So, we do feel that there are some zoning issues that need to be looked at. Back in 2021, we identified the need for an open development area for approval of this because it's on a common driveway. As far as we know, the applicant has not addressed that issue. There's also limits on the number of houses that can have access on a common driveway, the limit is four. This plan would propose five houses getting access off of a common drive. There's the issue of the continuing trespass. Another issue that Mark and Missy will address shortly is the disturbance calculations for the project. We believe that the plan has underestimated the actual disturbance of the property, and that a full SWIP should be required. Besides the driveway concern, another concern of the Benettis is the stormwater going onto their property because of the slopes. And as designed, we were unable to find any stormwater facilities in the driveway. The driveway as shown on the plans doesn't actually meet driveway width, so it would be wider. If you look at the limits of disturbance, and again, Mark will explain, we think they've underestimated it. So, we think you, the board needs to take a hard look at that. The stormwater practices need to be reviewed. There's also too many single-family homes getting access off of Buttonwood Lane already. The code limits, the CLOD Act, to having access by 14 single-family homes. Now, because this is not a town road, or is going to be a town road, its access would still be Buttonwood, and now we're creating an additional for homes getting access off of Buttonwood, so another potential zoning noncompliance. And then lastly, the code requires that you consider impacts of the project on adjoining lots, and directs that views of house lots from a buttoned property shall be minimized by the use of changing topography, vegetation, additional landscaping, et cetera. And again, this is an opportunity for the applicant to provide some landscaping, to maybe move the road over, and, you know, in the past two years, they've done nothing. We've not seen any alternative plans or any consideration given to making the project or minimizing the project impact on the neighbors. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Victoria, is this the first time we've seen all this put together in one memo?
Some of these issues were raised a few years ago, but this is the first time I've...
But getting, as I said, getting this today is obviously very difficult for us to digest, if we understand that.
Yes. So, that's it for me right now, thank you.
All right, I think since you're up there, we'll ask Mark to continue your discourse, and then we'll turn it over to Jordan and represent that you.
All right, thank you very much. I won't forget you. I couldn't tell if you were standing there to, because you couldn't hear a lot, but I'll get that.
Okay, do you have the most recent plans from C Street? Okay. Do you have the most recent plans drawn, C-3? Everyone? Keep going. Go. Let's take the...
I think it's an arrow form, Mark. Then I can see four with the arrows who got the water ball on them.
Well, I wanted the disturbance area.
Oh, that is C-3.
But this is a different, I think this is an old drawing because the drawing I'm looking at is November 22nd, 2022. It's this drawing.
Shouldn't we be looking at the current, the current set?
Yeah, this is November 22nd, the current set.
Mark six. There's been no substantial, there's been no substantial changes. We reduced the disturbance area a bit further, but fundamentally the same.
Was Mark six kind of posted?
Our department failed submission. It's...
I think it's the same as the health department.
Yeah, I can speak to any differences, I think. Yeah.
You hear him now, Jordan?
Yes. The driveway and the topography didn't meaningfully change though, so, but, you know, yeah. It would have been probably from Sam, Joe. And it would have been two weeks ago, kind of midday. Yeah.
So it's a different number though, Jordan?
The disturbance acreage has 3.56 acres. 3.56 acres.
Instead of, you had 4.24.
Yeah.
So that...
But I didn't include, which was in, I think, Victoria's letter, I did not include preserve areas, but I just calculated that because I had a uh-oh moment to see if that was required to be included, and it's now back to 4.1.
Are you looking for the final?
Approximately, approximately 4.1 now. I mean, I'd have to calculate it for certain, but lower 4, even with, even if, what you call it, preserve areas are required and larger disturbance for parking lots.
Check this now. I will access the file.
All right.
Okay, if I speak while we're waiting for Jim, should we not just to get the presentation?
Yeah, okay.
So that's the, oh, so that'll work, Jim, for the shows disturbance area, I believe.
Yep.
So if you can use, like, so I guess maybe, because this is kind of the area I'd like to look at in detail.
Start house spot and look around.
Yeah, I guess we could start in there, right? So, so this is my understanding. So I was, I guess it's the same drawing that I was reviewing. So it shows location for driveway disturbance areas is older dash line. This is residence septic system, primary septic system. And so, what I took a look at, and so, I guess the thrust of, you know, my comment and, you know, my observation of this is that I feel that, and so, Jordan was correct in saying that total disturbance is under five acres, then swift is basically providing an ENS plan. But in this instance, I feel that the disturbances ultimately will be greater than five acres because, like, for example, access for emergency vehicles throughout this entire loop, this is just, this is a small, very small area here that I think is going to have to be expanded in order to allow turnaround for not only emergency vehicles, but utility vehicles and actually construction. And I think it's not necessarily a generous area that's been provided around all the home sites, also including, you know, what ultimately could have to be disturbed as the 100% expansion areas for the absorption fields. So overall, I think that these, this disturbance areas can be larger, especially to allow turnaround for, like I said, utility and emergency vehicles. So if we could head to the north going down here, you notice, so through here, there's also, there's also re, you know, regrading, so you can't see underneath all the shading or existing contours. So these darker contours that you see here are proposed contours that Jordan shows. And then going back into, we won't change sheets, but going through the detailed sheets, it appears that this, and this section is actually individual driveway through here, right? And so, it's actually common up to this point, so individual driveway. What was shown here along through here is just, is some regrading for the driveway that Jordan shows pullouts. It's my understanding, from my review of the plans, that this driveway width is 12 feet through here and with some pulloffs as they're down. And then there's, according to the, it's difficult to ascertain, you know, the specific grading because of the scale of the drawing, but it appears from the growth sections and according to the different grading that there's all the surface runoff that is actually, you know, picking up adjacent lands that's uphill through here and along this, along the driveway is going to be picked up by swells. And so, all along the swells, I did not see any drainage improvements for the swells or, you know, culverts or erosion subsidy control along through here because it appears that it's just a long swell that's going to go down along this driveway through here and actually all the way down into, into the intersection here. But then, unless there's been a change in the current drawing through here, this cul-de-sac area, I think, needs to be examined for turning movements for utility vehicles and also emergency vehicles. I don't think there's, I ran some turning movements for fire apparatus and other emergency vehicles along with, you know, UTEI trucks and things like that. And I don't feel that the, you know, the radius in here will accommodate those turning movements. So I think that needs to be investigated. Along with the same issue here with access and being able to maneuver emergency vehicles and utility vehicles for both of these driveway areas, they're relatively small. And once again, I go back to the inclusion of a disturbance area relative to the actual site development for the crop for each of these individual lots. Same through here. Notice it just includes, you know, an absorption field here. Very little room allowed to excavate around that for all excavation equipment. So I think this, this needs to be expanded. I think it's a, it's not a conservative approach to the amount of disturbance area. And then, as you get, and you can't see, now you can see some of these existing contours here, but when you look at this section closely, there's actually, and so these, this is the common boundary line, right, between this project and the Neti's property. Here's the Neti's house right here. And so, there's actually, you can see it right here. See that? There's a swell that goes, that continues naturally goes down through there. It's, you know, it's a, it's a drainage path that goes down, cuts right across the Neti's and goes right through this, right through this intersection right here. So I think all the runoff that's going to be picked up and coming down here is actually going to be diverted onto the Neti's property. And so, that needs to be addressed and mitigated, you know, to, to avoid any increased runoff that's going to enter onto the Neti's property. Once again, through this entire length, all through here, you're replacing woods and, you know, existing understory with impervious area, what you're, is now putting a gravel driveway through here. And so then, getting to the gravel driveway, it's, so I'm assuming this section through here is common. So unless there's, unless I missed something through the application, it appeared that originally there was a cross-section that showed a common driveway width of 16 feet, and then it was reduced to 12. And then there was, and then actually, if you go through the code, for common driveway, it allows for a 12-foot driveway that there's two foot shoulders on each side, right? So ultimately, the width is 16 feet. This measures 12 feet wide. So I don't know whether there was a request for a waiver of that driveway width, or it's just, it was assumed to remain as 12. But my understanding is common all the way from here, all the way, all the way out to Buttonwood Lane. And then, once again, so now, all this runoff goes across the Neti's property, so there's a roadway here. I didn't see, you know, introduction of any culverts or, you know, you know, stormwater management areas to manage any of that stormwater coming down through here. And then, it appears to me that it would just, you know, continually go through the rutting, but over the roadway. And the same thing, if it goes, if this lot through here, this all comes down through here, and it goes this way through here, ultimately into the state roadway. So the, I guess, just to not belabor and take up any more of this board's time, you know, my, my opinion is that the impact area needs to be more conservatively approached. And then, also, I think that you need to take a look at, that the applicant needs to look at turning movements for construction, utility vehicles, and also, you know, for fire protection and, you know, access, access to all the, all the proposed lots. So it's, it's, I think it's total, it's total impact that would be greater than five acres and therefore would require a full stormwater pollution prevention.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Mark. I'm going to express some polite frustration at receiving this new material. So like, obviously, you're, the letter came in 558, 558, and this material is not made available. So this is not an appropriate way to be asking us to look at new information, although I'm not minimizing the significance of the information. But if we're going to do our job, we have to have more of an opportunity. And I'm going to take questions and we're going to move forward with the public hearing, but we're not going to get into reporting your information tonight and the back and forth. This is not an opportunity for engineers to present opposite information because you're not going to resolve it tonight. So that's, I'm just putting that out there now because, you know, everybody's going to have an opinion, but there's a lot that's new to look at and obviously, we're going to have to keep working with it. So I don't mean to be disrespectful of your information, but I'm trying to also be respectful of my colleagues here who need time. This is a lot to absorb and we need to prepare better for that in the future. So I'll take the lady in pink, and then we'll continue to take public comment. I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Hi, I'm Jerry Illey, and I live on Buttonwood Lane. Joe can't be here tonight due to previous family commitment, and he asked I read the following points into the public record in his absence. I do believe Gretchen, his letter was here two weeks ago, and hopefully we'll have to press yes for that. So can you please put up section 101-6.2v5 of Town Code up on the screen, it's called cul-de-sac streets?
That's not...
Yeah, we do it, but you want me to?
Just read it. How continued?
Why don't you read in the record what he wants to look at and go?
It is, it's in here, but he just thought people wanted to see it.
I see, okay.
So let me give you some background on Joe. He's worked the last 15 years at the largest architecture, engineering, and planning firm in his industry, serving as owner's representative on major public safety projects from some of the busiest roads, bridges, and tunnels in the country, including the George Washington Bridge, Lincoln and Holland Tunnels, Tri-Borough Bridge, Henry Hudson Bridge, the Mass Pike, I-66 in Virginia, the New Jersey Turnpike, and many more. He routinely led or collaborated with large teams of professional engineers, PEs, from his own firm and others, with most of those PEs specializing in civil roadway design and traffic safety. Although Joe has a master of science degree in engineering from RPI, he never pursued a PE because of possibly that narrows your piece of the project. More on this later. In his March 6 letter, Joe points out the obvious. A, limit on the number of lots. Town Code reads, where a cul-de-sac his street is authorized, either as a permanent dead-end street or as a temporary dead-end street, pending completion of a through-road network, not more than 12 single-family residential lots and gain access from such cul-de-sac street. Alderhill results in all of the following gaining access to Buttonwood Lane, a cul-de-sac street. A, the existing 23 single-family residential lots and Buttonwood Farm. B, Alderhill's four additional single-family residential lots. C, Alderhill's new 20-plus acre recreation space open to the general public. And D, Alderhill's new 800 square foot educational building, which will be independently managed by Alblon Conservancy, needing its own 1.3 acres of land for parking and who knows what else. Each element in the Alderhill proposal is a major violation of section 101-6.2v5 of Town Code because all these people living, working, learning, and playing here will be further loading an already overloaded cul-de-sac street that is everyone's only connection to emergency services. How long did the town's professional planner and town attorneys plan to pretend that Alderhill wouldn't grossly violate Town Code for the allowable number of lots and poo-poo Buttonwood Lane residents concerned about safety while knowingly worsening the already excessive public safety exposures of everyone on our cul-de-sac street, Buttonwood Lane? The town planner and the town attorneys are paid to find and clearly point out all the Town Code violations in any proposed subdivision or development. They have a professional duty to do so. They also have a professional duty to tell you that you have no discretion to waive this piece of Town Code and worsen public safety when Alderhill has all the land necessary to construct a well-designed private road to complete their fair share of the envisioned through-road network between Buttonwood and Rober, member.
Is this the letter that was, you ever been reading that?
Not the whole thing. It's much shorter. Making each element in the proposed Alderhill development fully compliant with Town Code and leaving only nine single-family lots and a horse farm on Buttonwood Lane's dead-end portion, well within the maximum of 12 lots allowed by Town Code for public safety. The excessive number of lots on cul-de-sac Buttonwood Lane is the primary reason parcel A must be eroded instead of a driveway. It's also the reason the planning board should have long ago rejected the Alderhill application and must do so now. A revised proposal fully compliant with Town Code is certainly feasible and would be welcome. It's what was expected back in 1986. It's what is clearly required now as the plan is stated by Town Code. So dead-end street distance limit. For R5 zoning, Town Code says, a cul-de-sac street shall be restricted to 1,000 feet. So for some theoretical new subdivision in R- through-road network between Buttonwood and Bullingbacher.
Is this the letter that was, you've been reading around?
It's just a portion, not the whole thing, it's much shorter.
Okay.
Making each element in the proposed Alderhill development fully compliant with Town Code and leaving only nine single-family lots and a horse farm on Buttonwood Lane's dead-end portion, well within the maximum of 12 lots allowed by Town Code for public safety. The excessive number of lots on cul-de-sac Buttonwood Lane is the primary reason parcel A must be eroded instead of a driveway. It's also the reason the planning board should have long ago rejected the Alderhill application and must do so now. A revised proposal fully compliant with Town Code is certainly feasible and would be welcome. It's what was expected back in 1986. It's what is clearly required now as the plan is stated by Town Code. So dead-end street distance limit. For R5 zoning, Town Code says a cul-de-sac street shall be restricted to 1,000 feet. So for some theoretical new subdivision in R5 zoning, Buttonwood zoning, on some theoretical new dead-end street, Town Code says that not even one of its theoretical lots can have its driveway connection more than 1,000 feet beyond the start of that dead-end street because it's, it'd be unsafe. So how could it possibly be compliant with Town Code, much less safe for all four, new Alderhill lots, and Alderhill's new educational facility, and Alderhill's new 20-plus acre recreational space to have all their driveway connections more than 1,900 feet before the start of its dead-end street, Buttonwood Lane? That's a huge impact to public safety for everyone on Buttonwood Lane, especially all the farm employees who work, and nine families who live even further into the dead-end street, and will be delayed or cut off from emergency services by every incident they experience, now plus every new incident that is inevitably going to occur in Alderhill's indentures. Three serious wrecks have already occurred here. One totaled a newly new SUV headed toward the farm, another totaled a new car heading down the hill in the snow. How long did the town's professional planner and town attorneys plan to all pretend that putting Alderhill's driveway entrance over 1,900 feet from the start of Buttonwood Lane wouldn't grossly violate the Town Code's 1,000-foot li- limit for new subdivisions and substantially worsen public safety for everyone on our cul-de-sac? As was just pointed out, Alderhill has all land necessary to construct a suitable private through-road between Buttonwood and Bullingbacher. In addition to all the Town Code compliance just mentioned, this through-road results in Buttonwood Lane dead-end portion ending up at about 800 feet, well within the 1,000 feet allowed in Town Code, and gives Alderhill's educational facility and the families living there public safety access from two streets. And instead of worsening the already excessive public safety exposure from people living too far into a dead-end street, it eliminates their excessive public safety exposures. Distance into a dead-end street is another reason Alderhill's current proposal must be rejected. C, town planner and town attorneys. Throughout the last 12-plus months, the town's professional planner and the town's expert land use attorneys have all somehow failed to even mention that the final filed map, FM 7878, of the Skyro acre subdivision, when evaluated under Section 101-6.2v5 of Town Code, shows that Buttonwood Lane was created as a temporary dead-end street having known code violations that would be fully resolved by an eventual Buttonwood-Bullingbacher through-road on parcel A. The town planner and town attorneys also somehow failed to even ever mention that the 1986 planning board could not have approved these known code violations without providing future planning boards like you with the right tools to ensure these violations never became worse, and instead would get fully resolved if, when, an Alderhill-like development ever happened. Joe expects these folks will try to say the 1986 planning board couldn't have possibly foreseen the role of parcel A in this full, full compliance with Town Code. Try to say these lot, lot counts and distances are just a big amazing near mystical coincidence. Try to say it's another big amazing near mystical coincidence that the part in parcel language is on both map FM 7878 and map FM 7938, and how no one could have possibly foreseen how requiring this language on both maps, one, would ensure that parcel A, if it, if it were ever sold, could only be sold to then current owner of the Duncanburg property, and two, would ensure that their two parcels would then be legally bound together forever and couldn't be separated. And three, was put on both maps by the 1986 planning boards where future Alderhill-like developer couldn't wiggle out of their obligation and worsen public safety by claiming they don't have the land to build the Buttonwood-Bullingbacher through-road. Because with this land and these two major violations of Town Code that no one ever told you about before this month, a developer would be forced into building a through-road on parcel A. The educational facility. That 800-square-foot educational facility and its 1.3-acre parcel dedicated to Alblon's programs will go somewhere in there. Joe expects the town planner and/or town attorneys and/or the developer will soothingly explain that they can stop this large educational facility later below me. It's spelled out in detail in the contract because it's due to Alblon agreeing to manage this small and unimportant easement, a costly responsibility the town has clearly said the town won't undertake, a costly responsibility other local nonprofits have refused as well for good reason. Build a through-road, and Joe has no objection to educational facility. But if you're going to approve Alderhill on a dead-end driveway, on a dead-end road, tell the town planner to make condition number one in his conditional approval resolution be that Alblon contract must be revised before Alderhill can start work to eliminate all Alblon buildings and uses of the building as long as Buttonwood Lane remains a dead-end. That simple act will show just how impossible it really is to stop the education facility from happening later.
May I, may I ask how much longer you're going to go on?
I have two pages, this and that.
Um, you know, we received the letter.
I just wanted to make sure it was read into public hearing, so people knew about it.
And many of the comments in there have been read into the public previously. And going forward, I think we're going to be considering limiting comment to those issues that have been raised in the past to a certain period of time. I, I'm going to indulge you tonight and let you finish it, but going forward, I want, you know, we've got a lot of new issues that have come up this evening that were at the same level of discussion. These are issues that have been brought up before.
So many, and our speed did not come up before.
Well, well, I'm going to indulge you this evening, but I'm just laying it out there now that you obviously can see there is a lot to be considered here, and we have to allow opportunity for everybody, and this is taking a long time.
So back to, um, professional engineers. The real test of whether you actually have a professional engineer is when you actually order them to mark their drawings suitable for construction, apply their seal to each drawing, and sign each drawing. Without these three marks, the Alderhill drawings mean nothing more than if a young child had drawn them. Any professional planner or land use attorney knows that. PEs only put these three marks on a drawing when they have all the necessary expertise, and they assure the design has no fatal flaw. That's an industry term. Alderhill's driveway and its maintenance agreement each have several fatal flaws. Some of these fatal flaws are discussed in Joe's Mark 6 letter. The town's engineers touched on some as well. Don't believe anyone who soothingly tells you the design is just fine. Eliminating these fatal flaws will change the Alderhill proposal so much that the public hearing will have to be reopened. Joe guarantees you'll be amazed how much Alderhill's shared driveways with the three PE marks will end up being so very different. It is truly unbelievable that town planner and two town attorneys, all specialists in town public safety code for developments and subdivisions, simply never thought...
Okay, I'm, I'm really, I'm, I'm sorry, but I have...
I'm just going to read his ending comment, says, "I'm just reading this for the record for Joe. He called in a lot of favors and poured a lot of hours into researching all this, and he thinks it's all very important for the, us people who really want to love it." So if you have any questions, you can talk to Joe.
And then if you want even to provide a...
It's given in record.
So, yeah, it's already, it's already been given to be...
So for the record that has been received by the town and is in the public record, I thank Joe for all the work he's put into it. I, I very much believe in the opportunity for the public to comment. I cannot help this evening but to make an additional comment, and that's, I like comments both from my planning boards and colleagues here, and comments from the public to be respectful, to be respectful of the professionals that are in this room advising everybody. We have professionals advising us, the applicant has professionals advising him, the people who are in opposition have professionals advising them. I don't like the aspersions that were cast on the professionals that serve the planning board. You can take exception, you can comment on what you don't like, but to say things like professional engineers are, are making comments like young children is really not appropriate. I think it's unkind, and I think it's disrespectful. And going forward, I just cannot see this sort of behavior. So those who have to make comments, I'm just saying, please, be respectful. Everybody here at this table, everybody out there is trying to resolve a situation that is very complicated, and it doesn't help to not be kind to one another. I'm sorry to have to say that, and I hope you take it with the spirit in which it's intended, but I just felt it had to be said tonight. So I will then, if there's, Alan, do you have something you want to say?
If you can wait until the public commentary is concluded, then we'll decide what anything you want to say.
Okay.
Is that all right?
That's fine with me. Anyone else from the public? Is there anyone else from the planning board that wishes to ask any questions or make any comments at this time?
Okay, Margaret.
Um, yeah, I just, there was a lot raised in Mr. Ely's letter, and I know some of the things that were raised, we have already addressed. I don't think it's in anybody's best interest tonight to be debating that and going back and forth. We're obviously not going to close the public hearing this evening, so there will be ample opportunity. We are clearly going to be referring all new information that has any relevance to engineering to CPL again, and in some ways, we're beginning a whole new review of that material. So, um, I, I don't mean whole new, but I mean it's new information that we have to have evaluated. We're not sitting at the table. Mark has presented information that we have, are going to have to review, and we're not prepared, any of us at this table, to review what Mark has submitted. So, yeah, I, I believe we'll be referring that.
To Christian.
Yeah, we'll be referring that to Christian. Okay, uh, if you have a question?
I have a question.
Go ahead, come on in, ask.
What is the new information that has been presented by Mark or by Victoria at 5:58 p.m. today that would require you to change your minds about closing the public hearing?
Well, I wasn't going to close it anyway, and I'll tell you why I wasn't going to close it. It was because we only received today from you the information on the easement and the letter from Alblon.
I was asked on Friday for that.
Well, we, we, in reviewing the meeting to this evening, when we realized that we did not have in our hands a copy of the easement, we contacted you because we wanted to make sure that we had that, because it's important information.
Sure, it was, just so you understand, the reason it hadn't been presented is that I thought it was clear from the zoning code that, that assigned final draft of an easement was a requirement of final plot stamp, not preliminary approval. So I assumed Alblon, as per the zoning code, it would be a condition of a preliminary approval.
Well, I'm just pointing out that, and I want the public to know that we now have a copy of that easement, and it's in the record, and that is also available for the public to look at.
Understood. And I understand that this has been a long time, and I appreciate everyone's time on this. I would just ask humbly that this has not become a precedent that Ms. Polidoro is able to buy a 12th and a 13th public hearing by presenting some other misquoted zoning code from a 20-year-old...
All right, I just ask for respect, I don't want you to indulge in that way, would you do?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let me restate, um, all of the issues that I, that have been raised by Ms. Polidoro, I have been through and through the 12543 zoning code on conservation subdivisions, the, all of the issues, including the number of houses allowed on, uh, common driveway and the others she mentioned are superseded by 125-43. And I see no reason why the same tactics couldn't be used next month, at next month's meeting, and I hope this won't set a precedent that will allow, uh, cause me to be here any longer, as I understand that CPL has now reviewed our plan, agreed with Jordan, as Jim said in the beginning, uh, over all three of their very intense reviews. There have been letters from two of them, bills from all of them, and John Lyons has reviewed all of the legal aspects of this. So respectfully, I hope that this won't happen next month. Thank you all for your time, I appreciate it.
Kim, is there anything?
Uh, no, uh, we'll look into, if you would like to be looking into that issue that Edna raised, and, um, that's, yeah.
Okay, so, um, as I see it, we are at the point of continuing this public hearing?
May I hear her agreement?
Absolutely.
So we were on the site with Victoria and her clients on, on January 20th, a couple of months ago. We walked the property, and Mr. Benetti was there, there was another gentleman, Fred Carl over there as well. We talked about a lot of these issues, again, a couple of months ago. There's different perspectives for how we arrived here, but just to remind the board that the, the issue all stems from Benetti's driveway being put in the wrong location. So, um, I'm not going to talk at length about it, and I don't plan to say anything about Mr. Ely's letter, I've read it, I read John Lyons' letter, I don't think, I'm going to comment anymore on that. But the reason we did that was to try to come up with, is there anything that will work? And when we were there, uh, I was talking to Mr. Benetti, and everybody was perfectly friendly, you know, is there some screening that you might want up by your house? Because his house is up higher, especially with, um, as Mark was pointing out, this swale, if you will, this is an elevation, but you could, Mr. Benetti's home is up a bit higher. Um, and, and so the point is, is that in two months, there were no comments. There were at 5:58 tonight. The issue of the trespass is a bit of a red herring. No one's trespassed. We don't know if anybody ever will trespass. So I, I thought Ms. Lockman's suggestion was a pretty good one, but as Michael Turnbull pointed out, he's correct, I think the distance is 400 feet, has to be tres- posted at every corner. But this, this issue that just sort of, it's like a bad meal, it won't go away, and no one's trespassed. So the practical solution is if the Benettis feel someone's trespassing, put up a sign staked in the ground that says "No trespassing," and then no one will trespass. But no one's doing it now. The only alternative, if what Ms. Lockman suggested isn't agreeable to the Benettis, perhaps it will be, I doubt it will be, but then Carl will have to put up a fence. It won't be particularly pretty, but I don't actually think the planning board has to touch the issue at all. But if what we have to do to get past this issue is put up a fence, and I think, where do you go?
Okay.
I think if, if he had to do that, he would, but if, if the planning board could, I'd have the, have the code looked at, but, you know, this is, we're trying to regulate behavior. Uh, I don't, I don't think, uh, I, I don't think it's something that we ought to be dealing with in terms of something, it's, it's purely abstract. It's saying, what are you going to do to prevent trespass? Oh gosh, you could say that to anybody doing subdivision. What are you going to do to not, you know, infringe on light and air to your neighbor? So I appreciate you guys have worked really hard, uh, and you're probably as unhappy as we are to receive something two minutes before the meeting started, when we met two months ago.
Just before the public's here to close, I'm not going to bring up, they had just into the record as I say, speak very briefly.
About?
Uh, the, the driveway entrance, very short, I recall. Can I speak or not?
Of course you can speak, Jordan, but what I'm trying to say, and I do not want to prevent you from speaking, but I don't want to continue this back and forth.
Oh, no.
Or we have obviously a number of unresolved issues that are going to take time and attention. So if you, I'm just asking you to consider whether what you have to offer is really important for us to hear this evening?
Yes.
All right?
I think yes. And it's short in any case, thank you.
So that'd be both, short and relevant.
Let's hope you agree it's irrelevant, it will be short. Um, first of all, just as a, as a physical mechanism of privacy or protection of property, I agree with the very low fence, I mean, it's not horrendous looking like a big fence, and don't trespass sign, that's, those two are effective. I just wanted, before the meeting closing out, the Benetti's property is up high, comes down, meaning stormwater comes down the hill towards the driveway. The exact edge of the swale next to the driveway, I just want to highlight it as an option, I'm not, I'm not arguing solutions.
Sounds like it.
No, no, I'm not. And I, I, it was important that I be able to, to speak, I'm not contending, it'll be analyzed over time. Just that if that is an issue, there are very simple ways of preventing it, if we're glad to do a berm or otherwise. And, um, last but not least, I wanted to express my amendability, that there's no contention about, um, expanding the parking, uh, to allow a vehicle to turn around.
We'll see those in solutions when we come back, right?
Right, that, and if the reserve area septic systems need to be included in the disturbance area, I would look to others saying include it, and in which case we will. So I'm not trying to, not trying to skirt or dodge the 5 acre limit.
Well, we appreciate your, um, willingness to look at that.
Yeah, and I think we'll still fall under it, is, is my hope, so, thank you. So, thank you.
Obviously, we're going to move for... Is there anyone else from the public? Just wanted to be sure. Are we going to continue this public hearing? Gretchen is looking at me already. I would like to continue discussion as long as we continue it, too.
What's scheduled with done at CPL? What is their schedule? I imagine it's assuming he's not going to receive a second or review in this one of our little focus now in terms of when we could get any spots from the...
I don't have any idea about the workload at CPL. I would be surprised to have this turn around in a month. I'm just making an educated guess based on...
How would if we try for that for a month?
I think at a minimum. All right.
Perhaps we should also, I know that for the applicant, there is a need that prior, once there's an application before the planning board, any new information that is provided to us two weeks prior to the next. Why don't we say that any new information needs to be coming to us two weeks prior? So, we do have a chance to look at it, so when we all get here, we actually can make use of the information that's developed to us.
Well, that is, of course, the expectation, and that is the difficulty of going out a month because we have to rely on all these folks here to guarantee that any new information they want to get back to us and the review by our consulting engineer should be, I mean, in fairness to them, the same should be true. We should be able to present to them Christians' response in advance of the meeting, so they aren't blindsided by that either.
Are we required to take in that information if it doesn't meet those guidelines?
I'm sorry?
Are we required to even take that information in?
No.
Well, if the public hearing is open...
We're required to take it, but we don't have to take action on it if we haven't...
We have to take action on it. I thought Sean's question was if they have to accept it.
You have to accept it, but if they haven't met the two-week deadline, then we have not obviously had the review... Let me look to you. In thinking about everything that you feel you all have to get through, are you confident?
You would want the opportunity to review anything new that they submitted for the next meeting.
And I'm asking if you're confident that you will be in a position to answer all the questions within, and have new material or any response material to us in two weeks?
I can keep looking at...
I would just say I have a procedural question regarding that because a lot of the things that were brought up are technical matters not to be kept open for public hearing to argue, but rather to say your concern is noted, it will be addressed by the applicable experts in Planning Board. So, where that stops is, I'm not clear on, and I don't want the public hearing to be used as a leveraging tool inappropriately, and I'm not aware. So, I'm just, I'm a little confused on how to put up limits on that aspect of the process.
But then the absence of knowing what new information comes in, it's hard to answer that question. Kim, do you have any...
When we continue this, what's realistic in terms of expectation, materials coming to us in the beginning, getting to Victoria and Martin, to the kind of the trend on the one point, is two months more realistic, or is it scheduled for two months so that everyone is on the same page when we sit down?
It's always going to be the question that somebody wants to have the last word. That's, I think, what the concern is, but I think if we have a deadline set, and your written submissions have to be put in, you have a chance to review it prior to the submission, like you can speak orally at the public hearing to add some...
We have no, Michael, sorry, I couldn't hear from the back, so I moved up. You were suggesting that it might take two months. From our perspective, we have nothing new to submit. As far as we know, the last word is that CPL was, had been over our plans, not for the third time, and we didn't see any issues with it. So, we have no problem with the two-week deadline for submission of hearing empty April...
They have nothing to submit, then our comments will stand.
What, so I'm, sorry, am I required to respond so they don't...
Or they may stand, it doesn't mean they're correct.
All right.
Right, of course.
The next meeting would be when Gretchen?
April 17th or the 22nd?
What is the April 17th? The jungle look like at this point? Normal? Normally bad? Normally bad.
For now.
I believe I hear a consensus that people would like to continue this to the next meeting.
I think you've given a chance to go a bit long, yeah, I think so.
We would like the opportunity to review whatever CPL submits in advance.
If we get it.
If you get it.
We will be in contact with Christian tomorrow, and we will encourage as rapid a turnaround and review as we can get.
And do we also agree that other than that, CPL, anything else that's going to be submitted will be within two weeks? I understand CPL may come, that's fair game, but anything new from today, other than CPL's comments two weeks before?
And I'm going to encourage the public to take us up on that as well. If there's anything new that came up tonight outside of the issues that we've talked about, Parcel A and all those things, that our attorney assures us they stand by, memo they gave the Planning Board, don't want to keep visiting that, but I want the public comment to focus on the new issues that were raised. If members of the public will want to review the easement, those things are open to review. So, we're going to go with, could I have a motion to go with April 17?
So...
Those in favor?
Do you want to stay with the, I'm sorry. Finish your motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Standards? Kim?
Do you want to provide what the deadline is for submission to write a comment on new materials only?
Gretchen, what were two weeks?
They are on, two weeks would be, there is a calendar online, so the second, it would be first meeting in April, so April 3rd.
So, by April 3rd, you want to have submitted to the Planning Board anything from the applicant or the neighbors in response to new issues raised? And I'm asking you to please not keep submitting comments about issues that we've been talking about, I'm really looking for the new issues that were raised.
Sorry, one question. Does the Plany, as was just raised by Victoria, just suggested that if I didn't respond point by point to her letter, that it would stand in some way? Just wanted to make sure it's clear.
Mike made it clear, doesn't mean it's correct, it just means those are her comments.
Okay, and so my question is, the Plany Board would prefer I not do Jim's, try to do Jim's job for him and just allow him and CPL to respond to, even if I believe they're false.
I think your attorney is giving you good advice. I think that's something that you can discuss internally. We're going to follow this two-week guideline. Is there anything else regarding this application this evening? All right, if there is none, then we're set for a none, and I believe we are at the point where I could accept a motion for adjournment?
So...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Standards? Motion heard. Thank you, thank you for your patience, everyone, thank you for your...